Welcome to the August 2nd, 2021 10:00 AM meeting of the Johnston County Board of Commissioners. I now call the meeting into order. As customary, we say the prayer and the pledge. I'm going to call on Commissioner Godwin for the prayer and Vietnam Veteran Group 990 for the pledge. Please stand.
Father God, we acknowledge your sovereignty over us today, Lord, and we ask your blessings on this meeting. We give our thanks that we're here in Johnston County in North Carolina, United States of America. We pray that we'll be diligent in our deliberations, courageous in our decisions, and mindful of our responsibilities. Be with each one here. Forgive us of our shortcomings, in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Before we get to the agenda item, obviously, we're back in our original space. I know we have board reports and comments at the end of the meeting, but I'd like to open it up. Any commissioners got anything they'd like to say as far as what we got going on?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just thank the staff and Adam and Rick and Jennifer and Paul, and the list goes on and on of the folks. Angie and Nettie's back there smiling. There's been so much work to get us back into this room, and we're just very thankful that the staff's been willing to do it. They've done a great job with our moving us on the road all this time for the past year, but it is nice to be back in our normal environment. And so, just want to thank them for all their hard work and dedication and making the changes to the room to make it conducive to the times we're in. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other reports or comments?
I did, Mr. Chairman, I did have one comment. For those of you who may or may not have been following the Olympics, we had a silver medalist last night, Kenny Harrison, went to Clayton High School, Johnston County native, finished second last night. She's also a world record holder, so a lot of good things there, but I want to thank her for all that. I don't know if you know her story, but she, in 2016, she had, didn't make the Olympics, and she persevered and pushed through, and this year, you know, came through last night as a silver medalist. And, you know, I don't know if you know her personally, but a great, great young woman, and her family is equally as great. So, congratulations to Kenny on the silver medal, and we're very proud of you.
Yes, I watched that. It was a great performance. And one of the questions this morning, and I'm not sure if I picked up on it last night or not, even though she didn't get the gold, her record still didn't get broken, right? She's still the world record holder. She does. Well, congratulations to her in representing Johnston County.
That's awesome.
And the United States of America. All right, there's no more comments. We'll move right into the first agenda item, approval and discussion of the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that the agenda be approved as submitted.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion carries. Consent on agenda items? I think it's A and B.
Mr. Chairman, I move the consent item, agenda items be approved.
I second it.
Got a motion, got a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, next on the agenda is COVID-19 update, and we're going to call on our favorite doctor.
Good morning.
Morning.
So, I'll tell you, I was actually out of town last week, so I came back to do this, I guess.
Thank you for doing that. Why would you do that?
I know. I hadn't missed it in over a year and a half, so, you know, I thought I'd come back and do this. So, I think everybody's aware of what's happening across the country and in our state and in our county. The pandemic is not over, and I think, you know, the things that I said when this first started, what I say today at 10:02 is what goes for today at 10:02. This virus is a virus. It mutates. It does what it's going to do. We don't have control of that, so we just have to respond and do what we can to prevent the spread. I'm going to give you an update on our numbers today. We have over 23,000 cases at this point, and I can tell you that our numbers have increased the past couple of weeks. You know, we were at that 20 to 30 cases a day last week. We were at over 70 cases a day. Last week, we had 466 cases that were added to our numbers. We had 24 patients hospitalized Friday. We hadn't done our hospitalizations yet today. We're at 248 deaths. We're dealing with two outbreaks and six clusters. Clusters are mainly at, in daycare, schools, so our younger people, one in a business. Of all those cases, we've had 89 reinfections, and that is people who had an infection previously and are now infected again. And we've had 98 breakthrough cases that have been reported to us, that is those who are vaccinated that are now positive again. So, we know the vaccine protects against extreme illness or hospitalizations and deaths. So, we continue to, of course, encourage everyone who's able, willing, and eligible to get vaccinated. When we look at the county alert system, we're in the yellow, significant spread for North Carolina, and that is over a two-week period. The CDC has a seven-day cycle that they look at, and we're actually in the red for that over the last seven days with high transmission. Testing-wise, our testing positivity rate is at 10.8%, and of course, you know that has increased. And we are getting more people tested. A part of that is that we're having more cases, so that's good. And the good thing is, we're working with our state partners in OptumServe. We have testing at the Miss Progressive Club now, Monday through Saturday, so that is available for testing. They do rapid and PCR tests there. Vaccination-wise, we have at 44% of our population, our total population, that has had at least one dose, 39% that's fully vaccinated, and that's our total population of 209,000. When we look at the population 12 and over, that's 52% that have had one dose, 18 and over 54% that have had one dose, and our 65-plus population over 80%. And we've talked about that. That population has been getting vaccinated. We're still providing some outreach clinics and working in our community as much as we can to get people vaccinated. Last week, we were at Clayton High School. They did 99 doses there. This week, we'll be at Corinth High School on Wednesday, Tuesday at Compare Foods, Campari Foods on Tuesday. Those are all open to the public, so we're providing that information on our website and social media sites, offering vaccine. We're offering vaccine, of course, every day of the week at the Health Department, and we offer all three doses of vaccine. We have seen a higher demand for Pfizer, but we do offer Moderna and J.J. So, as I continue to encourage as many people get vaccinated, we really need to try to do masking, particularly those who are indoors, and even if you're vaccinated at this point. This Delta variant is pretty contagious when we look at that, and so, we're trying to encourage everybody to continue with the mitigation measures that we've talked about previously. That is my report.
Any questions or comments?
I have a couple, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Pearson, of those that have been vaccinated and reinfected, have you seen a difference in which vaccine was involved?
Initially, you know, in our county, we gave a lot of Moderna doses. That was when we did our mass drive-through clinics, so most of the people in our county have gotten, you know, Moderna, Pfizer's catching up, but we're not seeing one more than the other. We are seeing all three with breakthroughs at this point.
Okay. The other thing is, a year ago, I was tested by your staff, and it was not an unpleasant experience, but recently, I had to have surgery, and they pre-tested me, and it was so unpleasant, I'm not sure I want to do that again.
So, they do nasal forengial?
Oh, yeah, way up there.
Yes.
Is there a lot of difference in that? What's the pros and cons on those two types?
Yeah, they've done research, and the studies show you, if you do the nasal, nasal forengial, of course, is a deeper process, but if you do the nasal and you do at least five rotations on each side, you get as good of a sample.
Okay. Thank you.
Dr. Pearson, a number of hospitalizations is sort of a guide point for me personally when I look at it to determine where we're at, and understand that, you know, this is not necessarily, you know, our hospital, but hospitalization throughout. You know, 22 is up there. Can you take me back maybe two or three months back when, before we saw the outbreak? What was the hospitalizations running during that period of time?
Around eight to 10 or so. Those numbers have been creeping up slowly. Last week, as I mentioned, we had, you know, 25 to 30, depending on the day. And like I said, we hadn't done our hospitalization, looked at all of our people who are admitted today. The good thing is, most of them are not vaccinated, not, most of them are, who are hospitalized, I'm sorry, are not vaccinated. So, the vaccine protects against hospitalization. So, last week of the 25 to 30 that were hospitalized, only one had been vaccinated.
So, would it be fair to say, Dr. Pearson, that even though you got the vaccine, it probably is not going to guarantee you, you're not going to get recurrence, but it should help you with adverse effects that would require hospitalization? Is that a fair statement?
That is correct. It would prevent severe illness and death. So, it's, you know, we talk about similar things with the flu vaccine. You know, we get the flu vaccine in hopes that if you did get the flu, which could be a different strain than what's in the vaccine, that you wouldn't get as sick, it wouldn't require hospitalization.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Any more questions or comments? Thank you, Doc.
Thank you.
All right, next on the agenda is public comments. This is a period where you can address this board on any issue that's not on the agenda for about three minutes. Do we have anybody that cares to speak to the board? I don't guess we have anybody outside. If not, we did receive an email from Mr. Ken Taylor. Commissioners, you have it at your desk. Madam Clerk, anything else I'm missing?
That's it.
That's it? All right, next on the agenda is public utilities. We'll call on Ms. Farmer.
The existing Johnston County Water and Sewer Capital Improvements Plan includes a project to implement an asset management program for the county's infrastructure. As the county's water and sewer system continues to expand and age, an asset management program is critical for us to maintain an asset inventory and to make better decisions for repair, replacement, and rehabilitation based on our recorded conditions and our ongoing assessments. This would include pumps, pipelines, master meters, valves, all of our infrastructure, whether it be at plants or whether it be in a distribution or collection system. In 2020, we contracted with HDR Engineering to assess our needs, help us develop an asset management implementation plan, and develop an RFP to evaluate software. They aided with our advertisement in the request for proposals. They advised us in selecting the best system to meet our needs, and they've also aided as we negotiated with the selected vendor. We've also worked with our IT department and GIS department. They've been very helpful in guiding us through this process and ensuring what we select in public utilities will interact and interface well with the other county's technology. But in order to implement this, we need to, we're requesting a budget revision for fiscal year 21, 22, as all of these costs were not included in our fiscal year 21, 22 budget with the initial adoption. We are looking at a total of $280,000, which includes our year-one software license and our technical services and contract services to continue to work with a consultant to implement the plan. You can see the proposed project funding. We propose one-half of it from our sewer fund balance and one-half of it from our water fund balance for a total of $280,000. Our future license fees for the project or for the program will be included in our yearly budgets as we present those and prepare those on a yearly basis. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have on this.
Any questions or comments?
Shandra, the 15 and 230, that's reoccurring every year?
That's correct.
It would be reoccurring.
That's correct. That would be a yearly license fee that we continue to pay to the vendor.
And you're going to appropriate it accordingly to the two different funds every year?
That's correct. It would be divided between water and sewer.
Any more questions or comments? If not?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Farmer. All right, next on our agenda is budget revisions. Finance Director?
Mr. Chairman, for that kind of money, you expect to see dirt and stuff moved, but I guess that's the nature of our technology now.
That's right.
Good morning. Finance has six total budget revisions for you today, three for fiscal year 21 and three for fiscal year 22 with the Health Department, the Sheriff's Office, and Social Services. And I'll be happy to answer any questions looking for approval today.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of budget revisions.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is appointments. We appointing items A through E. I think we can do that in one motion, and then we've got F, which is the hospital authority. We'll have to do it separately, so do I have a motion for A through E?
Motion to approve appointments for positions A through E.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is appointments. We appointing items A through E. I think we can do that in one motion, and then we've got F, which is the hospital authority. We'll have to do it separately, so do I have a motion for A through E?
Motion to approve appointments for positions A through E.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, on to F, it's the hospital authority. We've got three applications for two positions. How this normally works is, we choose two. You've got your ballot at your desk. We send that over to the hospital board. They vote on those members, send it back to this board for the final appointment, so...
And the hospital board has scheduled a call meeting in August to deal with this issue.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Godwin. Mr. Godwin serves as our hospital representative, so we'll pick those up at the end of our meeting. All right, next on the agenda is the link with tax collection report. Tax Administrator, Ms. Andrews?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. At your seat, you have a revised June collection report. Let me explain why it's revised. After the numbers were submitted, and we thought we had our year-end numbers, we received updated numbers from the state in relation to our registered motor vehicles, so it increased what was already a rather significant number over previous years. So, that number was revised up. So, what you have in front of you is basically, again, it's our June collection report, but it also relates to our fiscal year-end numbers. As you can see, we ended the year with a 99.77 collection rating, and again, the largest levy that we've had, it was at $150 million. As some of you have already mentioned to me today, you're aware that the bills were mailed last week, and, yeah, everybody's smiling at me. Yes, I started getting texts early Saturday morning.
The mail worked very well.
Yes, they did. This time, it sure did. Yes, I started receiving texts already morning with pictures of people's bills that had come in the mail, so, anyway, staff is in place. It's interesting, we have already had a number of people that have prepaid their bills, and we've also had people already in the office this morning paying their bills. So, as we start the 2021 billing cycle, staff is ready and we're willing to assist in any way possible. I'm happy to accept any questions related to the June collections report.
Ms. Andrews, you think that 99.77 is going to get you first place?
No, sir. I do not.
Second place?
Will be up there, but I don't know what it's going to be, but it's, I had several of my peers reach out to me wanting to know what it was, and I found out...
They want to follow you, right?
They do. Our history in the past, a few years ago especially, was the top one, but it is, you know, last year was an interesting year for a lot of us, and so, people have been very curious as to what it was, and for the ones that I have been made aware of, we did well. We did well, so. The interesting part of it, and this is kind of transitioning into the next section, that is also what I need to do is our settlement, my settlement document, as it closes out the last fiscal year, is of that amount, that $340,000 that is outstanding or was outstanding on June 30th, 57% of that, we couldn't even collect. It was either barred by bankruptcy, or they were cases that had been appealed to the Property Tax Commission and we could not collect on. Of that 340,000, a good chunk of it has been collected since, so had our timeline slid a little bit, it would have been even higher than 99.7%.
I think a significant number to me was, you mentioned that 150 million, 150,000 would be more accurate, but it's almost 9 million more than the previous year, so that's a factor that you have to put in there that...
That is correct.
It's actually collected more than 9 million from the previous year.
That is correct, and the interesting part about that is, I mean, you know, when you look at what it's based on, you know, the value in this county just keeps, you know, the county keeps growing, which is an excellent thing. You know, the county keeps growing, and thus, the levy, part of the reason why y'all chose to reduce the rate for the current year and the bills that just went out, but, I mean, you know, the levy was just indicative of the growth within the county, so, but you're right. My staff, when they saw, last year this time, when they first saw what the levy was going to be, I think some hearts started racing on the collection side, knowing what they had to do, but, you know, again, to point what that was made last week and, or last, a couple of weeks ago at the last meeting, you know, the citizens of Johnston County have done an excellent job doing their part, and the staff also has followed up and done a nice job in doing the things that they needed to do.
The point I would like to make is, since, you know, in the last four years, property taxes have decreased five cents, and it's indicative to what we say as, you know, growth is good. I mean, if it helps us return back to, that growth is helping our citizens, and when we get it, we give it back to citizens, so that's an important point.
And noted five cent decrease in the actual rate, and I know it gets confused a lot of the time because of a reevaluation, that it don't sometimes feel that there's been a tax deduction, but that is mandated across 100 counties by the state of North Carolina.
Yes, it is.
So, we have no control over the revow other than how often it's done, and obviously, we have no control over what value they put on property.
Right.
All we have at our disposal and our control is what we can do with the rate, and we've tried to do a good job with the rate to offset some things.
Points well made. Statute does require the revow a minimum of every eight years, and that, 2019 was the last county-wide revow in our, you know, mass appraisal, and it, you know, quite frankly, all it is is an indication of the growth in the county, and it is an attempt to make sure that the, there's a fairness in the taxes that are spread.
That you're not paying too much or too little, that you're fairly taxed property on the property.
Right, we're trying to balance everybody across the county, and yes, certain parts of the county did grow more than others, and thus, you know, their values increased because, again, the market is what the market is. I mean, we can't, you know, we just have to react to all that, and I don't mind telling you what we're seeing over the last few months. This county's doing very well, and I'm not saying the county proper, but the citizens and the property owners in this county, you know, the growth is definitely there.
Well, once again, thanks to your staff, and definitely thanks to the taxpayer for paying the taxes in that kind of manner.
Most surely, and I will pass that on to my staff.
Thank you. I believe we've got you on the, was that yours on the annual tax settlement?
That is me also, yes, sir.
Okay, I guess we need to entertain a motion to accept a tax settlement for 2020 and adopt an order to collect taxes for 2021.
If you, before you, you have the summary. I don't mind going, if you don't mind, can I go over a few points and then let you move or...
That's entirely up to you.
Okay. I'd like to kind of point out a few things. I think it kind of goes to what we're talking about here, and I'll just run through it real quickly. I'm not going to go over the first few pages of it, but the page, I believe it's four, it does show the significant growth in the county as each year over the past five, six years, you see the numbers there. But basically, 2021, the fiscal year, has been quite a challenge in my office as we have found our way how to work through the COVID-19 environment. With the assistance of other county departments, we continue to operate on a rotation of some working in the office while staff teleworked, while other staff, remaining staff teleworked, we encouraged remote options for paying taxes and receiving assistance from our office, and resulted in very positive comments for our efforts. Vast majority of Johnston County citizens did timely remit their 2020 taxes, and a number of phone payments and online payments increased over previous years. We offer payment plans for current billings and assist, to assist those not paying their property taxes through their mortgage escrow. More than 650 taxpayers used the payment plan option, and they remitted more than $2 million in their property taxes. Collections numbered through January 5th, 2021, which was the last day to timely pay, were somewhat misrepresented as timely mailed payments were received as late as March. At fiscal year-end, $340,882.81 of the county levy remained outstanding, and 57% of that was borrowed from collection due from bankruptcy or appealed valuations, as we spoke just a few months ago. The 2020 levy was Johnston County's largest to date, surpassing the previous year by more than $8 million. Personal property and business personal property items must be valued annually, and during the last year, staff valued more than 73,746 property items. Real estate staff reviewed 4,647 permits to determine value changes and processed 15,014 deed transfers to capture new ownership information. Since the 2019 county-wide reappraisal, Johnston County has realized an increase in more than 7,000 parcels. This is only a partial representation of the tasks performed by my staff to close the books on what was an extremely busy year for a very rapidly growing county. Again, and not, I can't say this enough, I want to thank the citizens of Johnston County for taking their responsibility of timely tax payment so very seriously, without which we could not be successful. To the Commissioners, County Management staff, I thank you for your support and confidence. It's our job to strive to ensure equitable valuation and collection of Johnston County taxes, and I commend my staff for remaining focused during this past year on the task at hand and providing excellent customer service while keeping pace with increasing workload. North Carolina General Statute 105373 requires that I provide a settlement of the prior year's taxes, which is what that document is in front of you. The settlement is a true and accurate accounting of the 2020 taxes, and I request that you, the Commissioners, accept this settlement. I further request, as North Carolina General Statute requires, that you also charge me with the responsibility of the 2021 tax collections.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the annual tax settlement and then also the charge to collect the taxes for 2021.
I second it.
Got a motion, got a second. Any further discussion? Got a motion, got a second. Any further discussion?
I'd like to comment that in looking at these numbers, you know, in the last five years, that levy's gone up 43%, and the motor vehicle's almost 50%. So, I know that's stretching our staff thin, but I commend you.
Thank you. I'll be glad to pass it along.
All right, any more discussion? All in favor of a motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Andrews. Next on the agenda is manager reports and comments. Mr. Hester?
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Got a couple of things I'd like to mention today. You know, the Johnston County will be receiving $40.6 million in federal stimulus money. It's called the American Rescue Plan. The first $20 million was sent to the county a month or so ago, and the next $20 next year. I wanted to just kind of start the conversation about things to think about and possibilities, and just throw out a recommendation that the board may not even want to act on today, and that's fine, but just think about, out of that 40.6, my suggestion would be that we consider, the board consider spending $35 million of that, designating that for water, county water, county wastewater, county broadband projects. With $5 million non-committed for flexibility with the board, however you see that. So, I just wanted to mention that today. I felt like it was time to start maybe talking about that. And as the board see fit, if you want to change that, change its numbers, they're not, it's not a perfect formula, but it's just one that I feel like that could do a lot of good things to help our growing water and wastewater system, and we all know we have been discussing broadband as well.
I've heard the recommendation. Does this board want to take an under advisement, take action, or any discussion on it? Thank you, Rick.
I'm leaning towards taking under advisement, and let's massage it, and it sounds like a good recommendation, but we might want to.
Sure. I know that realizes with this.
I would agree with that.
Thank you for.
One question, Mr. Hester.
Yes, sir.
Has it been determined that the broadband issue is acceptable use of that money?
Yes, sir, it is. The tricky part, as you know, with our broadband consultant that is presented to the board is how to make all that work in the best way and potential local matches, trying to be as fair as possible. And so, there's a lot of moving parts with that, so. But I appreciate the board at least entertaining that recommendation, and I fully respect any changes that you wish to make. Secondly, I would like to say that, you know, the revenue bonds that the board previously allowed to be financed recently, the bond ratings for those were very strong, and we don't have the final rates, but we anticipate those rates to be strong. We've got new Public Safety Center bids that are coming before the Commissioners in a couple of weeks for your consideration. And I just wanted to recognize a couple of people here, Chad McQuam, obviously, and then Martha Laffiter, who's here, I think, in the back. And there's a lot of things that go on behind the scenes with our debt management program, grants and things of that nature, to make all that stuff come together. And I just wanted to recognize Chad and Martha today and the entire finance team for all the work they do. Martha does a lot of quarterbacking these projects, working with the Davenport, our financial advisor, so I just wanted to recognize him this morning. So, we look forward to all that information, all that coming next board meeting, rates on those revenue bonds, and also the Public Safety Center on August 16th.
Thank you, Mr. Hester. Yes, and thank you for recognizing our help and all the hard work that they do in the back office back there. Any discussion on manager comments? All right, next on the agenda, as chairman, this board has to address the salaries of our sheriff and our registrar of deeds, which we did in closed session last meeting, based on market salary data provided by the Human Resource Department. The salaries would be set as follows. Sheriff Steve Bizzle, $164,000 yearly, and registrar of deeds Craig Olive, $105,000 yearly, and we would need a motion.
I make a motion, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of a motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Is there a need for a closed session?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board go into a closed session for the purpose of consulting with an attorney employed by the board in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege pursuant to NGS 14331811A3 to discuss matters related to location or expansion of industry or other businesses in the area pursuant to NCGS 14331811A4 to establish or instruct the staff concerning negotiations of the price terms of a contract concerning the acquisition of real property pursuant to NCGS 1433181A5.
Second.
Got a motion, got a second. Any further discussion? All in favor of a motion?
Aye.
Opposed? We are now in closed session. Y'all would, I think you will take your picture.